Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Washoe County Planning Commission, Tuesday, September 6th, 6 o'clock. First of all, can we get a determination of quorum, please?
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Michael Flick.
Present.
Dan Lazarewski.
Here.
Linda Kennedy.
Present.
Kate Nelson.
Here.
Pat Phillips.
Here.
Rob Pierce.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, let's do the pledge of allegiance, please. All right, ethics law announcement, please.
All right. Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you've received a gift or loan; number two, if you have a pecuniary interest; number three, if you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or number four, if you've provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered here today, please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, you must abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, please remember to disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Appeal procedure, Mr. Lloyd, please.
Most decisions-
Hold on, I'm not done.
Oh, sorry.
I have to read the instructions for public comment.
Oh, that's right. I apologize. We have new rules.
All right. So, instructions for public comment. This meeting is obviously held in the county commission chambers and also on the Zoom webinar. To participate via Zoom, you can log into the Zoom webinar at the link that's found on page one of the notice of meeting and agenda, or you can join by typing zoom.us into your computer browser, clicking "Join a Meeting" on the Zoom website, and entering "Meeting ID 842-7265-9406." Alternatively, you can join by telephone only, by dialing 1-669-900-9128, entering the meeting ID 842-7265-9406, and pressing "Pound." Let's see here. Members of the public may submit public comment by attending the meeting here in person, attending the meeting via teleconference, or attending by telephone only. If you wish to provide public comment via Zoom, you can log into the Zoom webinar at the link that I read previously and utilize the "Raise Hand" feature during any public comment period. To provide public comment via telephone only, you can press *9 to raise your hand and *6 to mute or unmute. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, appeal procedure, Mr. Lloyd, please.
Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, do we have any public comment?
Yes, in chambers, I have Roger Edwards, followed by Gary Schmidt.
Good evening, Commissioners. Roger Edwards for the record. And please enter my comments on the permanent record. That's on. There we go. Okay. Yeah, I'm a former member of this body. I served eight years on a commission. And I'm here to talk about how you have a matter before you that, in its essence, sounds simple enough, but you know, you're to decide the best possible outcome for a community in the long run, not just tomorrow, not just because maybe in the code book, but what's the right thing to do in the long run for the community. And I'd like to say that there's things that you're going to be talking about tonight that have to do with increasing density on a piece of property when the piece of property shouldn't be being developed by the owner anyway. And I think you need to step back a bit and look at the project. I'm trying not to refer to it, so I know this is public comment. It has to be kind of general, so I'm trying to be as general as I can. But the thing that you're going to be deciding on tonight has to do with the long-term use of a piece of property, and who owns it, and if it's in conflict with the public to develop a piece of property. And you know, I'm an 18-year general contractor also. I retired a long time ago, but I build buildings all over town and in different counties around here. And I know that I had to jump through enough hoops as an independent contractor that I really didn't want to be competing with a rural general improvement district to develop a piece of property or to, in the future, being limited on how I can develop a piece of property that's owned by a rural general improvement district. So please think about that when you make your decisions on your item coming up on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gary Schmidt, followed by John Kralik.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Gary Schmidt, and I'd like my comments here to be reflected in the minutes in detail for this item and for Agenda Item 9D. A matter of disclosure, we're in the process of filing three open meeting law complaints against the Gerlach General Improvement District. And within them, we're asking that the Attorney General set aside all their actions for the last 12 months. We also are in the process of filing a public records denial complaint against them for records that we've been repeatedly requesting from them and that they've been repeatedly We have a service map that's going to go up right now, I believe. I spoke recently to an acquaintance of mine in community development. I'm waiting for the map to come up. And just as a matter of background, the sewer and water service area in the general community of Gerlach, I own about 1/3 of the property, 120 acres or so. Willie Courtney owns about 120 acres. The rest of the town, including the acreage owned by the GID, comprises about 120 acres. So between Willie and I, who both oppose this application, we own 2/3 of the sewer and water service district area there. That parcel on the top with the little dog leg is mine. The parcel on the left, large parcel, it belongs to Willie Courtney. In my conversation with somebody, and if we go to the legend for this, that is defined as in the Gerlach suburban community water and sewer service area. I got some indication that the new regional plan that's being considered now may be attempting to take Willie and I out of that service area, we believe, as a retaliatory act, if it's done, as a retaliatory act for us opposing this application by the GID. I'll be speaking again, maybe twice. You'll be hearing from other people. But one thing I want to say is the minutes and the submissions from us of petitions, letters, et cetera, clearly reflect that the general community of Gerlach does not want 7 to 9 units per acre on their 18 acres, and we oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Kralik, followed by Gail Kralik.
Hi, John Kralik, broker-owner, Alpine Realty International. Just wanted to comment earlier that I'd like my comments tonight, my written statements that I submitted on Agenda Item Number 9. I'm here on Gary's behalf to speak on highest and best use for property. Been a real estate developer for 34 years. I will get deeper into the subject matter when Item 9 comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, in chambers, Gail Kralik.
Good evening. My name is Gail Kralik, and I am a longtime full-year-round resident of Incline Village. I'm here this evening actually to speak to this commission board on two items on your agenda tonight, and all my comments I would request be provided in the meeting minutes. One, I'm very interested in learning and hearing a bit more about our project, apparently going to Incline Village. I am, I will be very clear, opposed to that project, although I'm a Realtor and have been for years. I just don't believe that's the highest use for that particular area in our community. And then also, I'm here on behalf of Gary Schmidt as well. My husband and I have been working with Mr. Schmitz for quite some time, actually several years now, on his various projects and land throughout the state of Nevada. So I'll be referring to that project later. And lastly, I'm really trying to understand why the Planning Commission hears such items first, and if they're appealed, they then go to Washoe County Commission. I think it's kind of a backwards idea, but I don't set the rules up for Washoe County. With that, as a real estate professional, I think it would behoove this commission here to really listen to those individuals such as myself, who's been in the business for over three decades, and understand what it takes to develop a property. As we've been doing that, again, myself, 30 years, my husband, a bit longer than myself. Thanks so much.
I have no further comments in chambers. I do have comments on Zoom. Mr. Doug Flaherty. Doug, please state your first and last name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Doug Flaherty, for the record, Incline Village, Nevada. Chair and members of the commission, many projects representing increases in height, density, and coverage will be bought before you in the future months and years within the boundaries of the Washoe-Tahoe area plan. This pro-development, pro-density message is part of an aggressive set of cumulative steps led by Washoe County Board Chair, who also serves on the TRPA and the TTD, as well as some pet nonprofits, to eventually transform Washoe-Tahoe and the entire Lake Tahoe Basin into an exclusive 360-degree resort community. Much of this effort is based on the misleading concept that increased height, density, and coverage will pencil into achievable and affordable workforce housing. What will actually occur will be a significant construction of four-story condos up and down Tahoe Boulevard in the middle of Incline Village, gutting affordable commercial retail space, and transforming Incline Village as we know it forever. In the near term, your Washoe County Commissioner chair is now turning her transformation efforts towards proposed code changes by supporting accessory dwelling units within the Washoe-Tahoe area plan boundaries. This in the name of affordable or additional housing. This will result in hundreds of short-term rentals and cause significant adverse environmental and safety impacts in the area, and any such proposal must undergo a full data-driven cumulative environmental impact statement analyzing all local and regional impacts since the 2012 TRPA regional plan. This includes a data-driven roadway-by-roadway wildfire evacuation capacity evaluation. Failure to perform such an analysis places visitors and residents alike at peril. Who among you will have the leadership to push back on this cumulative adverse impact philosophy? And finally, I want, on another subject, you're being told that all of these projects are reviewed by the fire department. That's true. What you probably don't know is there is no code requirement to assess evacuation of people in these facilities as far as wildfire evacuation. Their code sections basically talk about egress from the building, access for fire equipment, turnaround for fire equipment. So you're being misled, everybody, every time somebody says, "Oh, the fire department doesn't have a problem with this," that's because they've never reviewed it for safe, cumulative wildfire evacuation capacity. So there's really a hole in our code, and there's a tremendous risk to our residents and visitors. I hope today you'll ask the fire department if they've reviewed the projects for wildfire evacuation capacity roadway-by-roadway. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment?
Take a look here. That's it? There's no further public comment?
Okay, I'll close the public comment time and move on to number six, approval of today's agenda. Does everybody have a chance to look at it? Everybody okay with it? Did I get a motion?
Chairman Don- Chairman, this is Commissioner Doncic. I move to approve the agenda for September 5th, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, Pat Phillips, I second it.
All right. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to seven, approval of the August 1st draft minutes. Does everybody get a chance to look at it? Is there any corrections?
Commissioner Lazarewski, motion to approve the August 1st draft minutes as written.
Commissioner Pierce, are there public comment was not specified? They did want to make public comment during this item as well as during the item itself. It is closed, though? Just this one? Okay, so if it's closed.
I'm sorry, did you want to make general public comment from the last public comment period? Is that-
The beginning, the beginning of public comments is what I want to make.
Okay. It's up to the discretion of the chair after we finish this item whether to have-
Reopen it.
-opened it up again.
Okay. All right, back to where we were on seven. So I've got a motion to accept the draft minutes, so I have a second.
Commissioner Doncic, I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay? No? Okay, none. So it passes unanimously. All right, so, I'm sorry, I, what was that? I thought we closed the public comment.
It was closed.
And there was nobody there.
Right, but they didn't specify whether they wanted to make public comment during the item or general public comment, but they wanted to make public comment during this general, the general item that was closed, item five.
I recommend just reopening it.
Okay, I'll reopen it for this. Is this the only person?
Yes, is there anybody else who should make public comment during item five? That's it. If you would please state your first and last name for the record.
All right, we're going to reopen public comment number five.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry for the misunderstanding. My name is Yolanda Knock. I am really concerned about Incline Village. You know, last winter was one of our worst winters, and while we were digging out, you know, under like 10 or 20 feet of snow, there was something that happened that actually most of the people in Incline Village don't even know to this day, but the zoning or the approved, allowed use was changed on Tahoe Boulevard. And we are at risk for losing a lot of our businesses. A lot of our businesses rent. And it's not like Reno or Sparks, where if you lose your lease, if you're a business and you lose your lease, you can easily find another place to rent. It's not like that at all. There was one business that lost their lease for another reason, and they could not find another place in Incline Village to reopen their doors. So, you know, I've been told, oh, this is a done deal, I can't do anything about it. But I just want you to know that I feel like you've stabbed us in the back. That's how bad I feel. My bank, US Bank, they are renters. My dry cleaners, they rent, all in this area that you changed the allowed use to luxury condos. There are many other businesses that I frequent, and it's not like, you know, I can run down the street and go to another business. That's not the case. And so it's really sad what you have done by changing the zoning on or the allowed use, because a lot of these business owners, you know, they're thinking, oh, well, you know, I need to put, you know, $50,000 into my building, but, oh, you know, there's a developer that they're willing to give me, you know, $3 million for my property. So, you know, they'll do the easy way. And so I'm just really concerned that we're going to lose a lot of our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes anybody wishing to make public comment.
Including Zoom?
Including Zoom.
Okay, so public comment is now closed. All right, we're moving on to number eight, Envision Washoe 2040 Master Plan Update.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Eric Young from the Washoe County Planning Program. Thank you for having us tonight on such a busy night. I know you have a long agenda, so we're not going to keep you for long. I wanted to let you know what we've been up to lately and let you know when you'll see us again. So here's a quick list of some community engagement activities that we've been doing. You can see where we are. We're all the way down here to the Planning Commission Open House, which we did outside in the lobby this evening to catch people coming in and out. And for everybody here this evening, I encourage you to grab one of our flyers on the way out, take a picture of the QR code, take the flyer, and go home and check out the website, and have a look at the new regional or the new Washoe County Master Plan. We'd love to hear your comments on it. Those flyers are one of the best ways to access it. It has a QR code that'll take you right there. Or you can obviously just go to our website, envisionwashoe2040.org, and click on a link to take you to the plan as well. So far, we've had a little over 1,000 views of the plan, and we've had a little over 100 actual comments on the plan. So we feel pretty good about that. We've been out at all of these different events, meeting a lot of people that we would normally never engage with at some of these pre-planned events. We've had, feel like we've had a lot of success getting flyers and information out to people who apparently are coming online and having a look at it, because we have over 1,000 views. So we're pretty happy with that. Today through the next couple of days, we have Melissa Ruth from our consulting team in town with us from Colorado. This time, a little bit of a change to their visit. We don't plan on driving all over the county and seeing every last spot like we usually do. We're going to have a little bit of a more sit-in-office-and-work session. We're going to go over some of the software that's used. We're going to go over some of the maps. We're going to talk about some of the conversion to the Development Code. We have a draft of the new master plan, which we want people to comment on, but to remind you that we do have the second portion of this, or the B-side, so to speak, is the Development Code Amendment that will go along with this, that takes all of that regulatory language that currently exists in the master plan and puts it directly in the Development Code. Now, the reason that we're not showing that as a big preview is because we're not changing any language, we're not looking at creating any new rules. This is all existing language, it's just going into the proper document. So that will come along to you in your staff report package that you'll get for the public hearing that's currently on the calendar for October 16th. We've got a couple more public engagements that we're going to hit up. We've got the north of the river, which will be at the North Valleys Park this Thursday at the Board of Adjustment. During the day, we're going to do the same thing that we did and try and get people in and out of the lobby. And then we've got a Spanish Springs Planner at the library plant to meet people in and out of the library as well. The Warm Springs Cab is going to be a little different because we actually scheduled a special meeting for the Warm Springs community that we went to last week. And so that doesn't show up on here because we scheduled a special meeting for them at their request. So that's where we are. If you have any expectations of the staff report that we're currently developing and working on, Trevor and I would love to hear that. Anything that you want to make sure is in there. But mostly, what we're asking people to do is to get online, look at the, look at the plan, comment on the plan. Like we've been telling everybody, this is a very different way to engage with us and interact with us than we've done before. The platform that we're using allows you to leave comments on graphics, on photos, on, it allows you to tell us what kind of a comment it is, if it's a question or a suggestion edit. We check it regularly if you have a question. And people are telling us that it's much more engaging. They're using the word fun. Whoever would have thought, right, that reviewing the new Washoe County Master Plan could be fun, but that's the feedback that we're getting, because you can see other people's comments, you can comment on somebody else's comment. So it's really a much more engaging platform to let us know your thoughts. And so we'd love for everybody listening and in the audience and for all of you, if you haven't done it yet, to feel free to go on there. We're asking you not to go on, because as you know, we have the open meeting law issues with being able to see and engage with everybody's comments. So you are going to get a full package like you normally do for your October 16th meeting. But if you would like to go on and see comments that other people are posting, to see how the public feels about the plan, if you'd like to go on and see what the public is saying about the plan as we go along, what their issues and questions are, you are welcome to go on and do that. So that's what we have for you tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to do that, but I do know you have a full agenda, so we didn't bring a large presentation for you.
Thank you, Eric. Does anybody have any questions for Eric? No?
Mr. Chair, Jen Gustafson for the record. I just wanted to clarify something that Mr. Young said. The board members are certainly more than welcome to go on to the website and to review the plan, but we would ask that you not comment on the plan. So that's the, that's the open meeting law limitation that he's referring to. You're certainly more than welcome to read over the information, read over the comments, but please do not provide your own comments, because that could become deliberation.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying that. Anybody got anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, guys, for what you're doing. We appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to 9A abandonment case number WAB 23-0002-5854 Malarkey Abandonment. Mr. Lloyd.
This item, WAB 230002, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to abandon Washoe County's interest in 220 square feet of a 33-foot wide government patent easement along the southern boundary of parcel 5854 Malarkey Way, APN 15025054. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner, Courtney Waikie.
Okay. Stick here. Good evening, Courtney Waikie, Senior Planner. The item before you is case number WAB 23-002-5845854 Malarkey.
Can you please state your name?
Sorry, did I not say that? Courtney Waikie, Senior Planner.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the request is to abandon Washoe County's interest in 220 square feet, 10-foot-wide by 22-foot-long section of a 33-foot-wide government patent easement along the southern boundary of the parcel at 5- along the southern boundary of the parcel at 5854 Malarkey Way. Above is kind of a rough rendering site plan of what existing uses are there and then showing the easement. The portion of the easement proposed for abandonment is located along the southern property line of the subject parcel. The parcel is improved with a single-family dwelling. The applicant is requesting the abandonment in order to be able to construct a garage in the southeast area of the parcel. The parcel is a regulatory zone of high-density rural, as do the parcels to the north, south, west, and east. The HDR setbacks are 30 feet from the front and rear yards and 12 feet from the side yards. Pursuant to Washoe County Code Article 406.05, when an access easement traverses a portion of a property and has a total width of more than 28 feet, the required yard setback is measured from the edge of the easement closest to the proposed structure. So in this case, the setbacks would be taken from the edge of the easement versus the property line. And therefore, that's why the portion where the request is to abandon the easement is to allow for using the setback from the property line and not the edge of easement. Here is an exhibit of the legal description indicating the requested abandonment in that area there, shown as 220 square feet. Again, here is the parcel map indicating that the parcel is bordered on all three sides with a 33-foot-wide easement along the southeast and west property line. The yellow portion indicates the area requesting, requested for abandonment. As stated, the applicant is requesting to abandon a portion of a government patent easement located solely on the applicant's parcel. Malarkey Way will continue to provide roadway access for the subject parcel and as well as all of the surrounding parcels. Abandoning property owners were noticed and no phone calls, emails, or any opposition was received. Various agencies, applicable agencies reviewed the application. Their comments are included in the staff report, and no comments and opposition were received. Any agencies with conditions of approval were included as an exhibit in the conditions of approval. Staff does believe that all the findings can be made, and they were explained in the staff report. And with that, I have provided a possible motion for your consideration and am available for any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions right now? No? Does the applicant have a presentation they'd like to present?
No, Your Honor. Pops. Sorry, I'm sorry. So you're going to be, Your Honor, so I might have to call that. Just a point of clarification. It's not a garage. It's just three bedrooms that we're hoping to build. This lovely lady behind me is my wife, and albeit she's steadfast now, I'm fearful that if I don't give her a bedroom soon, that she will no longer be my wife. So, yeah, that was the only point of clarification.
Sir, could you please state your name for the record?
I apologize. My name is Daniel Herschkowitz.
Thank you, Daniel.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's open it up to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, in chambers, I have Danielle Herschkowitz. If you could please state your first and last name for the record. Danielle. Danielle, yes. Okay. That's it then. Any further public comments? There is no further public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Okay. We'll close the public comment. We'll bring it back to the board. Does anybody have any questions or anything on this? No? Okay. Can I get a motion?
Chair, Commissioner Doncic. I motion, I move that after giving reasoned considerations the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number WAB 23-0002, Herschkowitz, 2023 Living Trust, and DNN, with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code 110.806.20.
All right. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Nelson, a second.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to 9B tentative subdivision map case number WTM 21-012, 947 Tahoe condo. Do we have any disclosures on this?
I have a disclosure. With my current capacity as the interim Director of Public Works, and my previous capacity as the Engineering Manager at the Incline Village General Improvement District, I have worked directly with the engineers on this project for the last two and a half years. And therefore, it would be difficult for a reasoned person to find that my vote is impartial. That being said, I will be recusing myself on this item.
Okay. Thank you. We'll let her exit, and then we'll continue on.
Yes, Jen Gustafson, for the record. So Commissioner Nelson will be leaving us for this section. And then someone, when we're done with this public hearing, please remind her to come back into the room. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Lloyd, if you'd like to read it.
Absolutely. This is a tentative subdivision map case number WTM 21-012 for 947 Tahoe condo project. For hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve a tentative subdivision map for a 40-unit residential condominium project containing 830 square feet of professional office space on an approximately two-acre site located at 941 and 947 Tahoe Boulevard in Incline Village. The project area is comprised of two parcels. APN 13223109 is 1.389 acres, and 13223110 is .598 acres. The parcels will be legally merged into a single parcel, then divided into 40 airspace condominiums with a 1.11-acre common area parcel. And representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner, once again, Courtney Waikie. And she also will identify a couple of corrections, too. Thank you.
Okay. Florish, thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Courtney Waikie, Senior Planner, Washoe County. I do want to note that it was found fairly late in the week last week that the original application, or sorry, not application, but the original staff report that was sent out was inadvertently included. It was a previous draft. So our administrative staff did send the revised staff report. I hope everyone had a chance to review that and was able to more carefully look at that version than the latter. Specifically, the discrepancy, other than some of the grammatical and just more information that we wanted to include in the staff report, was indicating the correct square footage of the commercial professional office space to 925 square feet. That was a map revision that we received late. And there was an additional, I apologize. I feel like there was one additional comment, substantial revision. I think that that was the primary concern. It may come to me as I go through the presentation. If there was anything to note, but it wasn't too very substantive other than that 100 square feet that was revised. So we'll go ahead and go through the project request and go from there. Apologize. Okay. So as Mr. Lloyd indicated, the case number before you is WTM 21-012 for 947 Tahoe. And this is a tentative subdivision map for a 40-unit residential condominium project that is proposing to contain 925 square feet of professional commercial office space on an approximately two-acre project area site at 941 and 947 Tahoe Boulevard in Incline Village. The project area is comprised of two parcels, 1.389 acres and .598 acres. The parcels will be legally merged into a single parcel, then divided into 40 airspace condominiums with a 1.11-acre common area parcel. Here's just a vicinity map to orient where the subject parcels are located, located at the eastern section of State Route 28 and Southwood Boulevard. Existing commercial buildings are located to the west and south of the project area. Multi-family residential units are located to the north across from State Route 28 of the project area. In recreational play fields, the Incline Park is adjacent to the Incline Middle School, are both located to the east. So many of you are familiar with this project. I'll briefly go over some of the background, not necessarily directly related to this application, but to better understand some of the items or actions that have been taking place as a, with the applicant. Apologize. I'm stumbling on my words there. So in June of 2022, TRPA issued a development permit for a mixed-use, multifamily, and commercial development at the project site. The approved project included 40 multifamily units and 925 square feet of commercial office space. Something to note, in the Tahoe Basin, per the TRPA Code of Ordinances, only existing or approved developments can be subdivided. Therefore, the first, they called the two-step subdivision process. So the first step is to get that multifamily or multi-use development permit, and that is what the applicant did for the project site. Following that permit approval by TRPA, the developer did the second part of what is called the two-step subdivision process and requested the conversion of those multifamily rental units into owner-occupied, single-family-dwelling condominiums. This request could not be granted because it was determined that single-family, even limited as condominium, uses were not an allowable use in the Incline Village Commercial, specifically Special Area 1 of Incline Village Commercial Regulatory Zone. In response, the developer applied for a Development Code Amendment, WDC A22-0003, with the county to amend Washoe County Code 220.145, which is the regulatory zone allowed uses, requesting to add single-family dwellings limited to airspace condominiums as an allowable use within that regulatory zone, Incline Village Commercial Special Area 1. In January of 2023, the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners did approve the Development Code to amend the Washoe County Code as requested. Because this is in the Washoe-Tahoe, or subject to the Washoe-Tahoe area plan, the amendment also required approval by the TRPA, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, apologize, governing board. On June 28 of 2023, the TRPA governing board approved the proposed amendment with additional mitigation measures defining and setting minimum standards for mixed-use development and workforce housing in Special Area 1. These were summarized, included on page 12 of the staff report. Important to note, I, that's a very high-level description. I didn't want to go into the complete detail of all the processes and required to amend the area plan or the Tahoe area plan. But I will say that it was probably close to nine different public hearings and/or meetings that took place in order for the amendment to be formally adopted. The TRPA has the ability. The county really, we can't add mitigation measures to a Development Code Amendment. The TRPA did have that option and opportunity to add certain mitigation measures to address some of the concerns raised, most of which being setting mixed-use standards and affordable housing requirements and possible deed restrictions. And those were included as an exhibit to TRPA's approval. I did want to mention them and make you aware of them, that those will be required. However, those are the responsibility of the TRPA to enforce and determine consistency with those mitigation measures. Let's see. Enforcing, okay. Yes. We'll go ahead and move on. Apologize for the lengthy text on this slide. So essentially, this is what is considered a mixed-use development that includes 40 single-family dwellings, residential units, and commercial professional office space that would be enclosed within a single U-shaped building with a maximum height of 56 feet, which is allowed in town centers. There will be 1.11 acres of common area. It will include below-grade parking, 95 parking spaces, four of which will be handicap accessible, bike storage, parking, fire pits, outdoor seating, jacuzzi, landscaping, permanent best management practices per the TRPA requirements. And those are associated with requiring that all water runoff maintained on-site and a rooftop terrace. I do want to note on that bullet point here that this is a tentative map, and we're looking at the tentative map to approve condominium space. Some of the specific design standards will likely have a more detailed review at the building permit stage when they apply for the formal building permit to construct the condominium. However, we did look at those design standards to make sure that we felt like they would be able to implement them at that time. The airspace condominiums will range in size from 925 square feet to 4,425 square feet. The setbacks for the subject parcel are 30 feet from the front and rear property lines and 12 feet from the sides. The proposed building footprint does meet the yard setbacks. Washoe County Code Section 110.438.95 does allow grading plans to be submitted and reviewed with a tentative subdivision map application. The proposed grading is consistent with all standards of Article 438, and no request to vary the standards were included as part of this application. And we'll go ahead and look at some of the exhibits that were included in the staff report. Here is an overall site plan. The red outlined section here is basically the footprint of the building, with the remaining portion being included as part of the open space parcel. You can see the access is off of Southwood Boulevard. The picture or the image on the left is the basement parking floor plan where the professional office space is proposed. To the right is additional parking on the first floor along with condominium units. The second and third floor here are solely condominium units. And finally, the fourth floor has that rooftop common area open space. And on the right there, I know it's somewhat difficult to see, but it does give you some elevations to better understand the sections between each of those three sides. Here's a picture looking south from State Route 28 from Tahoe Boulevard. Reviewing agencies. The application was sent to all applicable reviewing agencies, and you were able to see in your staff report just how many agencies and departments we did review, send for review, and who responded and/or provided any sort of conditions of approval. The Incline Village General Improvement District provided, which provides water, wastewater, trash, and recreational services, stated in their comments and conditions that they will require the submittal of a utility plan, signed and wet-stamped by a Nevada licensed engineer for all water, wastewater, and trash services, and that the IFGID Board of Trustees must approve all utilities in which IFGID would supply to the project. No conditions or comments in opposition were received from IFGID. The applicant did provide a transportation, apologize, transportation study prepared by LSC. I'll kind of briefly go over the high level of this because it is rather technical. And I believe there may be somebody from LSC available to answer some of the more technical questions, if you have them. The project is forecasted to generate a total of approximately 174 one-way daily vehicle trips at the site driveway on a weekday, including 14 p.m. peak hour vehicle trips. Something to note that I actually had to look into. The Tahoe, in the basin, they use daily vehicle trips use daily vehicle trips versus average daily trips. My understanding is that they are somewhat synonymous, and the analysis is used the same, and that it's the 200 peak trips that trigger that full traffic analysis. That is at least my understanding. So, and I did request that LSC perhaps respond to that, because I did get that comment and question today, and was unfortunately unable to look into it in the way that I would have liked, because I was traveling. So that is my understanding, though. And so the 200 maximum daily trips was not reached, or that threshold was not reached, and therefore a full-blown traffic analysis was not required. The level of service at the site access driveway for the, that 28 and Village Boulevard would remain what LSC is calling acceptable within the project. With implementation of the proposed project, the new site driveways intersecting 28 and Southwood Boulevard would continue to operate at a level of service A. The intersection of 28, Southwood Boulevard, Northwood Boulevard will remain at a level of service F, and LSC indicated that there would only be a small increase in delay. A review of the improvement options indicated that a single or a signal or a roundabout was not warranted, and recognized that there may be a minimal, vehicle hours of delay would be reduced slightly, that the LOS would remain at an F, and therefore the recommendation was for no additional improvements at that intersection. The project is exempt, as I described in the beginning here, of a full vehicle miles travel analysis based on the number of vehicle trips required for projects that generate more than 200 vehicle trips. Additional roadway and traffic information, wrapping up, apologize. Washoe County Roads Supervisor reviewed the tentative map and provided no comments indicating they have any concerns or conditions required. The Nevada Department of Transportation also provided comments and conditions indicating an encroachment permit will be required and must comply with NDOT standards. NDOT did not indicate any concerns with potential roadway or intersection impacts. We did send a notice to all property owners, individual property owners within 500 feet, and that was a total of 58. Staff did provide the rationale for all the applicable findings and believes that they can be made. And with that, I have provided a possible motion for your consideration and am available for any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for her right now? No? Does the applicant have a presentation they'd like to present?
It appears, it appears they do not.
They do not, okay. Then we'll open it up to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, in chambers, I have Helen Neff, followed by Lynn Brown.
Go ahead, you can state your name and...
My name's Helen Neff, I'm an Incline Village resident, and I have a video to show regarding the intersection that's closest to this project. And it's going to show you the speeding traffic and the number of turns made in every direction. That gray car, oops, what happened? The gray car on Southwood wants to cross the intersection, and they can't, so they're looking to the left at traffic, and they're going to make a right turn, not paying any attention to whether there are pedestrians, and watch the truck behind it, the truck is bigger, the truck doesn't care, it's going to get across that intersection no matter what, even if it has to go around another truck coming the other way. Flashing lights to alert the cars about pedestrians are only on 28, they're not on Southwood and Northwood. In any case, the vehicles do not stop for the traffic, the traffic lights. Notice the crosswalks, now watch that white truck, it's not going to wait, let's go, let's go, let's go, okay, make the turn, there's not even a car coming the other way, and notice the size of the vehicles, you're going to see a nice, big van delivering, there you go, to railies. Okay, level of service talks about vehicle traffic, it does not talk about pedestrians, it does not address cyclists, it does not address safety for people using the streets. The transportation consultants say that intersection is F, it's going to be a further F. If you look at the wall project right down the street in Crystal Bay, those same consultants say that project requires a level of service C. So the hotel people get C, and the residents of Incline Village get F. I'm trying to figure that out. State Route 28 is a scenic highway, TRPA requires scenic highways to have a level of service C. The Washoe County Transportation Plan calls for safety improvements on that intersection is detailed in the comments that I sent to you by email on Friday, and the petition signed by 35 neighbors who use that intersection or try to use that intersection safely. It's not safe for vehicles, it's not safe for pedestrians, and it's not safe for cyclists. Page 21 of the staff report quotes NRS 278349, "The planning commission shall consider the effect of the proposed subdivision on existing public streets and the need for new streets to serve the subdivision." We don't need a new street, no new street, just a traffic signal and leading pedestrian intervals that are activated when pedestrians need to cross, and it's needed as soon as possible, definitely before occupancy of 947. I don't know if any of you have left your home to take a walk, and have not been able to return back home for 52 days because you were hit by a reckless driver when in a crosswalk in Incline Village, the walk signaled in your favor. I don't know if you've been faced with close with a million dollars in unexpected medical bills, a legal mess, and a lifetime of PTSD like I have. But I do know that you can make Incline Village a safer place for others with your decision regarding this intersection at the site of the development before you for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lynn Brown, followed by Fay McConnell.
Don't laugh at my artwork, please. Hi, my name is Lynn Brown. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a 35-year resident of Incline Village. My husband was a schoolteacher there, I owned a small business, my kids live there, my grandkids live there. Hands down, my largest fear in town is we're all going to end up going up in flames, literally. We only have three ways out of town, there's no way to get out of town via Highway 28. It's a nightmare, either direction, and that includes going all the way to Kings Beach. I don't know how many of you have drove the area, but the East Shore is crazy, it really is. In the past five years, I've witnessed extreme increase in traffic due to the huge influx of short-term rentals and visitors just in general. Yesterday, I volunteered at Keep Tahoe Blue in Kings Beach to help clean up trash on the shoreline. One of our major finds was a box, little bit bigger than this actually, full of fireworks left behind. In the past, the people staying in the condo right next to me dumped briquettes over the deck and started a fire in the grass. We are no different than Maui when it comes to extreme fire danger. My son, he's a fire chief for Tahoe Douglas, he helped fight the fire in Paradise, California. He said it looked like a bomb had gone off. There were cars lined up all along the streets, burnt to a crisp. People couldn't drive out of town quick enough, they abandoned their cars, they ran on foot just to get away. It's the same thing that happened in Lahaina. There are dozens of ways to start fires in Tahoe, someone dumping briquettes, cigarettes, illegal fireworks, thunderstorms, deliberate arsons. I guess what I'm asking you to all realize, we live with this fear every day, and to add 40 more condos and 95 more cars, good luck, we're going to burn, you know? It's very scary, and I just hope you think about it, because it's a nightmare, really is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Fay McConnell, followed by Patricia Owens.
My name is Fay McConnell, I reside in Incline Village.
Turn it down a little. Thank you.
I want to address the intersection that Helen showed you on the video. Two weeks ago, I was nearly hit in the intersection. There's the caution light, I pushed it, I waited until all the traffic on 28 stopped, I proceeded in the crosswalk. When I got to the first vehicle that had stopped, I was just beyond the truck, and some person decided to pass on the right from the line of cars that had stopped. If I had taken two more steps, he would have hit me. There was a truck also crossing at the same time, who had to slam his brakes on not to hit the car that was passing on the right. We don't need a caution light there, we need a stoplight, a traffic light that everyone abides by, not just if you choose to stop. It's a very dangerous intersection, kids cross there to go to the middle school, and we know kids don't normally abide by everything. They will go even if the light is on, but the traffic hasn't stopped. We need a traffic light, not a caution light, not a if you choose to stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, in chambers, I have Patricia Owens.
Hello, my name is Patricia Owens, and I've lived in Incline Village for 35 years. I use the intersection at Southwood and 28 probably four times a day or four times a week, and it, it's always holds your breath because you never know if you can get across safely. You watch for oncoming cars, cars that are trying to turn from, coming down from Northwood, and it really does need a stoplight. I've had friends that have been hit crossing because there's, there's just no guidance. My other, I have another question, and I don't know if that's appropriate. I've been a volunteer with defensible space and fire issues up in Incline for probably 30 years, and I noticed on this building site that they're going to have fire pits, and I noticed there was a transportation report, but is there any kind of review by the fire department before they complete or process these things? Anyway, thank you very much for hearing from us, appreciate your time and your consideration to help us put in a stoplight. I'm a substitute teacher, and, you know, our kids are our most precious bout of resource, and we need to keep them safe. Thank you.
Thank you. In chambers, I also have Gail Krollick.
Good evening, Gail Krollick. My husband, John Krollick, and I have been full-time year-round members of the Incline Village community since 1991. It's been an absolute blessing to live there, it's been even a better blessing to raise our two children there. I am very familiar with this project, I am very familiar with her community, having lived there and been extremely involved in my community. While this project is probably one of the most beautiful projects I have ever seen, I've attended the meetings, I've gone to the cab meetings, et cetera, and the developer meetings explaining this project. It's beautiful, but it's not for Incline Village specifically in this particular area. Yes, the intersection is extremely dangerous, I do a lot of walking myself, and there is a tremendous amount of cars flying by, no one adheres to the speed limits there. Adding additional 40 units in Incline Village in this area, in my opinion, is wrong. I sell real estate for a career, this is what I've done for the last 30-plus years of my life. This is a project that many people are going to love, they'll want to perhaps purchase there, but I can assure you, I'm not one who's going to be selling this project, because I actually sell properties that I believe in and in communities that I believe in. This project is not the right spot for Incline Village, it's not the right location. Just as Commissioner Hill heard from our community loud and clear, when we're pushing for the hub, the transportation hub to be at the opposite side of town in a very highly dense, density area of our community, finally heard loud and clear, our community does not want that project. The majority of the community that, at least of those individuals that I spoke to, again, this is not the project for this area. Gorgeous project, but just not in that area. Is a stoplight the answer? Perhaps a short-term answer for what our immediate need is right now, but let's not, in my opinion, go forward to a project that's simply going to add on to an additional 40 homeowners in our community, trying to get out when there is a fire, and there will be, it's just not, it's not, if it's going to happen, it's a matter of when. And now we have an additional 40 property owners on trying to get out of Incline Village and the Bay Area, excuse me, Incline Village and the Tahoe Basin. Please don't approve this project, it's just not right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any further public comment in chambers? Okay, I have no further comment in chambers, but I do have several hands raised on Zoom, starting with the person ending in enovix.com, please state your first and last name for the record, and unmute, you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, my name is Stefan Pitzka. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm a long-term resident in Incline Village, I live at Third Creek, and I have four children. One of my sons attended three years in Klein Middle School and crossed daily from Monday to Friday Tahoe Boulevard. Oftentimes, neighbors or colleagues would tell me cars don't stop for him there, and I don't understand why these comments were made earlier, there is no roundabout or traffic light required, that's very disturbing. My son was there almost run over by a car, and I do think it is very important to have proper pedestrian crossing installed. My third youngest son, he asked me just two weeks ago that he wants to walk to Lake Tahoe School, my answer to him was, you can't because it's not safe. While he was objecting to my response, I asked him, what would our mom say, my late wife passed earlier this year away? He thought about it for a second, and his answer was, she would say the same, it's not safe to cross Tahoe Boulevard. So I really am asking the commission to consider put proper pedestrian crossing up. Thank you very much.
I have Doug Flaherty. Doug, give me one moment. Go ahead and unmute and state your first and last name for the record, please.
Doug Flaherty, Incline Village, Nevada, former battalion chief, having seen many people hit in the crosswalks and their parents arriving. You know, you guys were well-intended on all this zoning stuff, what you did, if you're going to allow 40-unit condos up and down Tahoe Boulevard, you did that, that's a done deal. And you feel for the, gee, this is going to be a walkable community, knowing that the LOS near the project is an F, knowing that the consultant states the project's an F, and there's going to be... and there's gonna be an incremental increase in traffic. What you've done is you're simply avoiding the cumulative impacts of something that you've already approved. You're gonna have 40 parcels on Highway 28 with an LOS of F in at least two of those areas. What are you doing? No stoplight? Yeah, I'll tell you what a stoplight's gonna do. It's gonna continue to back up traffic. But I can tell you, I use that intersection at least every other day. I live just outside the 500 feet of notification. It is very dangerous. This isn't hyperbole. It's not panic. It's reality. Obviously, you guys haven't been out to take a look and kind of compare Helen's video there, which was very, very accurate, and it's much worse many, many times during the The first child that's hit in that intersection after you approve tonight's meeting, that will be on you, every one of you. To not ask for a stoplight is criminal. I don't see how you can do it. I just don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have Kathy Julian. Kathy, please state your first, last name for the record, unmute.
Thank you, Kathy Julian, for the record. I would just like to reinforce the comments made by Helen F., the first speaker. I travel that intersection daily. This is how I get to the post office. This is how I get to Rayleigh's. It is a very difficult intersection to cross. It is even a very difficult intersection to make a right turn. I have no experience as a pedestrian at that intersection, but I can assure you, as a driver, this intersection needs a proper stoplight, especially if you're going to increase the density in that area and all along Highway 28. Thank you very much.
Which intersection exactly?
Right up here.
You're talking Southwood?
The intersection of Southwood, Northwood, and 28. Southwood is to the south. Northwood is to the north, and 28 runs in between. It's a bit confusing. And 947 Tahoe is located on the corner of Southwood and Highway 28. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
I have no further public comment on Zoom.
And do we have anybody in the chambers? Last call.
No further public comment in chambers either.
Okay, we're gonna close the public comment and bring it back to the board. Okay, bring it back to the board for discussion or questions, or Courtney, or anything?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can you explain what you did in terms of getting public comment about this change?
Who are you talking to? Courtney?
Courtney.
Our planner?
Yeah.
So the item before, Courtney Wyke, senior planner for the record, the item before you today is a tentative map, and that's to allow for the conversion of the multifamily into single-family. The previous background and history that I was explaining was a request to allow for that to happen, which meant adding single-family dwellings limited to condominiums to this regulatory zone. And so I think that was kind of the first part, is what sort of public engagement happened during that process. And quite frankly, it is probably one of the hardest regulatory requests or permits that Washoe County has is to amend the area plan in Tahoe. We do require a neighborhood meeting for both that process as well as the tentative map before you. It goes through the planning commission. It goes through the Board of County Supervisors for a first reading, then a second reading, and then at the TRPA, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, they have a rather extensive process as well, where you have to go to the Regional Plan Implementation Committee for an informational item, then you have to go to the Advisory Planning Commission, you have to go back to the Regional Planning Implementation Committee, and then finally, the recommendation is given to the TRPA Governing Board. So essentially, when you add all of that up, it's about nine different public meetings and/or hearings that took place for the area plan amendment, which added that additional use. And then as far as today, the request before you, which is the tentative map, a neighborhood meeting was required, and I believe they've also gone to the Citizens Advisory Board over, kind of in conjunction with also the Development Code Amendment or Area Plan Amendment, to provide informational purposes only to the advisory board. And today is our first public hearing on the tentative, or really, the only required public hearing on the tentative map. This tentative map will also have to go before the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, and that's where those mitigation measures that were referenced in the staff report will be required at that time. But for, so hopefully, that was kind of a long-winded answer, but there's been quite a bit of extensive opportunity for public engagement and public comment throughout this process. And I do want to just note something that I don't know that was made clear. The multifamily dwelling is allowed by right. So if the same applicant or project, or they wanted to come in with just multifamily, the exact same design size, et cetera, we would be looking at it through a building permit, and there's no discretionary action. The discretionary action is the subdivision to allow for it to become condominiums.
So you're saying that if this was denied, they could just build apartments there?
They could do exactly what they're proposing. It's just changing the form of ownership.
And can you explain to me again why they're exempt from a full-blown traffic study?
Why they're exempt from full-blown traffic analysis? For both the county and the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, the threshold is that 200 vehicle trips, whether it's average daily trips or daily vehicle trips traveled, and the LSC study indicated it only generated 174.
Okay, and is the 200 threshold, is that a policy in an ordinance? I mean, do we have to follow that 200 discretionary number?
I believe that is in code and/or, I mean, I may defer to Mr. Lloyd without having looked exactly where it is, but I know that 200 is the threshold for that full traffic analysis. There's still a traffic analysis, but...
And I don't know if that is, in fact, in our code, but I believe that's in TRPA's code. Typically, down here, and it's different up in the basin than it is down here. Down here, we don't require a full traffic analysis unless you hit 80 peak hour, unless you hit 80 peak hour trips. This would be far under 80 peak hour trips at 170 daily maximum trips. So I believe, though, it's in the code and ordinances, if I'm not mistaken, for TRPA.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so basically, you can't deviate from that number?
Well, if it exceeds that number, then there's additional analysis and impact studies that would be required.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. I'm confused. And it's dealing with open space. What is the definition of open space?
We have different terminology for open space. We have an open space zoning designation, which is different than a common open space subdivision. In this case, this will trigger neither of those. The property is, it will not be zoned open space. Neither is, say, common open space development. This is a common airspace condominium project that has a common area, but there is no open space associated with this proposed request.
Because they refer to this throughout the text as being open. I was just, normally, when you say open space in a development, I mean, they deed off property or they make slopes, open space and what have you, but in this, there's no deed of ownership to the homeowners association or the county.
Following the recordation of the map, there will be common area, that is, common ownership, that will be maintained by an association, whether it be a property owners or a homeowners' association. But yeah, the distinction is it's not considered common open space. It is common area.
For whose benefit?
For the benefit of the residents, the future residents of the development.
And as I recall, Policy ILU 6-1, traditional, common or open space is for the benefit of the community. And so this is not for the benefit of the community. It's for the benefit of the residents of that project. Okay, because I was trying to tie in this thing and say, well, how on earth can subterranean parking benefit, you know, as open space for the community or the fourth-floor roof being open space and benefit the community? It clearly doesn't, but so it's not, it's not to benefit.
Chairman, I have another question.
When he's done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You're all done? Okay. I'm still confused. I don't understand what the difference is, whether we approve this or don't, in terms of what's going to get built on this property.
And that would be up to the developer and the property owners if they were to still move forward with the development as is, knowing that they could not subdivide and sell each of those condominiums. Is that likely? I'm not sure, but if they were to have just come in for a multifamily dwelling project, it would only be subject to that, a building permit review, where we would be doing a review of the Tahoe area plan policies and design standards, making sure that all of those things were incorporated. But that site has already been indicated with an allowable density, and I apologize, I should have my screen up, and I believe it was 20 units per acre in what they're proposing. As far as density is not changing, whether it's single-family or multifamily, it's just a matter of whether or not they, in order for them to sell off an individual parcel, they do have to go through the subdivision tentative map process to create those new airspace condominium parcels.
Okay.
To follow.
Anyone wants to jump in, feel free. It is complicated. I understand.
So if this was developed as apartments, would a requirement of that development be a signal?
No. There would be no, all of these conditions of approval could come in the form of corrections at the building permit stage, but a lot of those discretionary conditions that get added when you apply for a discretionary permit, like a tentative map, are in association with the map, not at the building permit stage, which is what we call ministerial. It's just a review to make sure that everything is, what they submitted is consistent and compliant with the existing regulations, or whether it's through engineering or fire department, et cetera. But there would not be the ability to tie any improvements to off-site, you know, traffic concerns with the building permit.
We're stuck.
Yeah. It's an end issue.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For the record, Patricia Phillips, through the chair to the staff. I have a question. Isn't there a school within a block away and a park?
Correct.
So are there any special speed limits, signals, anything to alert people to that?
I imagine that there may be. It would be under the guise of either NDOT or county roads to, you know, make sure that if there are requirements for that, that they're there, but that would be under their authority to do so.
Then my question would be probably to Mr. Lloyd. Would it be possible to put an amendment in this that to proceed with this, that there be the condition, that there be a signal or some sort of safety feature because of both the school, the park, and the condos?
That's a difficult question to answer. It really is. And the reason I say that is that the, currently, the intersection is operating at a level of service of F, which is not a situation that was created by the applicants. They are gonna be adding additional traffic, that will generate additional traffic, that will exacerbate a current problem that's, you know, currently at that LOS of F. But whether or not we would, or the planning commission should impose an additional condition to build a signal to correct a current problem, that might be an issue of irrational nexus. And you have to look at proportionality. Is what they're proposing, does it justify the need for a signal based on the traffic that will be generated? I don't know the answer to that question. Now, I do know, after reviewing the comments from NDOT, that I will require an encroachment permit through NDOT, and NDOT may, in fact, require that, but I cannot answer that question tonight. That's under the, I suppose, you know, the planning commission, you have, under your purview, the authority to impose additional conditions, but I don't know legally if that would hold. I'll look at my attorney.
Jen Gustafson, for the record, I'll just kind of add on to what Trevor was saying. Just keep in mind, for all development, if you're looking to add a condition of approval, legally, there has to be both what's called a nexus, and it has to be proportional. So a nexus means it has to be directly related to the impacts that this particular development proposal will add to, for example, that intersection, right? And Trevor was pointing out, of course, that the intersection is already at an LOS F without any impacts from this development. And then there also is that proportionality aspect, that the condition that you require has to be proportional to the impact of the development. So those are kind of, I know those are very large, vague legal concepts, but any condition that you add has to have both that nexus and the proportionality, that the impacts from this particular development would warrant whatever condition that you're adding.
To add to that, my concern was the regional significance that comes out of the building being located by the school as being a project of regional significance. What do you think?
I can tell you, any project in the basin is considered a project of regional significance as, I don't know if they use that terminology, but certainly it has to receive approval through the regional body. That's the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. So in that regard, they will look at safety as a consideration as well.
Commissioner Lazarewski for Courtney. I know that you brought this up, but I just wanted to double-check. So the standards that define mixed use, in terms of anything more specific than just a single parcel containing both residential and commercial, anything more specific than that is the purview of the that is the purview of the TRPA?
This project actually prompted it between both the TRPA and the county that there is this kind of lack of specificity and, you know, what we would probably all like to see as some sort of ratio. And that is correct, that when you scour through the area plan, that is really what, you know, mixed use is defined as, a mix of residential and a mix of commercial. It doesn't say much more than that. In the TRPA's authority and discretion at the governing board, they were able to come up with a mechanism through their process of adopting the area plan to tie, kind of that nexus proportionality that we were just talking about, tie these mitigation measures to some associated impact that they were trying to mitigate. That was already, the county had already adopted the development code amendment at that time. And so it is truly only under the guise of the TRPA to implement those standards. The TRPA has an intention to apply those universally across the basin. This was kind of their first shot and project to put those into play. I can also let you know that the county is also pursuing and planning to bring a county-initiated Tahoe area plan amendment, that we may also duplicate those mixed use standards. But where we are today, for the county's purposes, we do not have a clear mixed use, you know, definition that says 20% of units or really with the sort of criteria that TRPA was able to tie as far as their adoption, that we currently can implement here today. We just have to go with the kind of minimal direction, that it just has to be two uses qualify as a mixed use project.
Okay. And with regards to traffic, if we don't find that this specific project creates such additionality of traffic that it's causing a safety problem at that location, but it's a pre-existing safety problem, what's the planning mechanism for that intersection being addressed going forward?
I mean, I would lean towards that it would, it would be kind of a part of a greater process of looking at transportation improvement projects, either through NDOT, the Tahoe Transportation District, some of the mobility and transportation plans that they would be identifying in their, you know, prioritization of intersections and places along the corridor within the inclined Village Crystal Bay area. Where are these needs? If it wasn't tied to the specific project, that would really be the way to pursue trying to see improvements at the specific intersection.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Courtney, I'm going totally different direction here. There was a talk about affordable housing within this, if we went forward with it. And with it being 40 units, I'm gathering, just as a clarification, only 10%, which means four units would have to be affordable housing. That's correct?
So I want to be careful because that is a TRPA regulation, but however, we did work with the TRPA, and I can only convey to you what my understanding is. You know, I think you're also more than welcome to ask the applicant, because right now, there's no condition of approval. I can't guarantee you that that's going to happen. All I can guarantee you is that TRPA should be assuring that that is, that is going to be consistent. My understanding is that yes, there's a requirement to deed restrict, so in that whole special area, per the TRPA approval, any project that would like to subdivide to have a single-family dwelling has to deed restrict 10% of the units. So in this case, that would be four units. There's also a component that allows you to do off-site mitigation. So essentially, what they can do is they deed restrict the four units, and that deed restriction remains in place only until they provide four deed-restricted units in that same regulatory zone somewhere else. So if they construct four, like say, two duplexes that are deed-restricted, they'll be able to remove the deed restriction from the current parcel. I know that is kind of complex, and I don't know. So it, there will be, per the mitigation measures implemented by TRPA, as a condition of approval or as a mitigation measure upon their adoption, four deed-restricted units, whether they end up on site or they end up being built somewhere else, only until they are constructed can that deed restriction be lifted from the four on site.
Thank you for the clarification, Courtney.
So you could build, and this is actually fairly common in affordable housing and projects where maybe there's an affordable housing, well, not an affordable, there's a project that requires some mitigation or some deed restriction, but they mitigate it off-site, so they have to go and build four units or 40 or whatever that may be somewhere else on a different parcel, but the requirement is tied to the approval of that original development, if that provides any clarity.
So it would have to still be in that special area one zoning?
Yes.
It couldn't go kind of outside of that?
That is my understanding, and I would want to double check that Exhibit B, but that is my understanding, that it has to be within special area one.
Anybody else have any questions for? Okay. I got one. So correct me if I'm wrong, but there's been numerous approvals throughout this full, all these stages. It's been approved by numerous different agencies. And we're sitting here tonight, and all we're looking at is a tentative subdivision map. That's it, right?
For this specific project, the county technically hasn't looked at this map or the development proposal. We did receive the tentative map initially, right, in 2021? That's when we discovered that you couldn't subdivide. The TRPA has approved, which is the first step in that two-step subdivision process, in multifamily dwelling mixed-use projects. So they've approved it as-is, and the TRPA has quite a bit more environmental regulations and checklists, et cetera, that go along with any TRPA that gets issued. And so they did look at a lot of those things, same things that we're talking about tonight with traffic, and any of the initial environmental mitigation measures associated with the project. And the TRPA, obviously separate from our bodies, did approve the project as-is.
Okay. I'm deeply concerned with the traffic. I just go on record and state that.
I understand.
But I do not think that it is our place to put a contingency on this. I don't think we can do it. I don't think it'll hold up in court. So anyways, with that, do we have any other discussion? No? Okay, all accept a motion? Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Doncic, I agree with all the issues with traffic and all the discussions, but as it's been presented to us, I do not feel that we have any real basis to deny this. It's standard as it is, and we have to hope that TRPA goes forward with what Courtney says, the details they're going to go through. So with this portion, I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report, information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved tentative subdivision map case number WTM 21-012 for PALCAP FFIF Tahoe 1 LLC, with the condition included Exhibit A to this matter, having made all 10 findings in accordance with Washoe County Code 110.608.25 and Tahoe Area Plan Policy, excuse me, LU 1-3, findings of compatibility, and also Tahoe Pan Policy LU 1-3 compatibility.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Lazarewski, I'd like to say for the record that I personally find it objectionable that you can carve off a basement area and call it an office and qualify that as mixed use, but it meets the standards of the county rules. And as terrible as the traffic, I think the total traffic count going through that intersection during peak hour, as it stands right now, is over 1,000 vehicles, so that's three seconds between vehicles continuously for an hour. Forty more apartments or condos wouldn't significantly change that, wouldn't create that problem, and it's not on them to solve the problem that preexists at that location. So with those caveats, I will second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Two days and four approvals, so the motion passes. Trevor, do you want to tell them about appeal, possibly?
I do.
If they want to appeal this, you can appeal this to the county commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, most decisions rendered by the planning commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the planning commission and you qualify as an agreed person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you. Can somebody get our missing board member?
Chair Pierce, can we take a five-minute recess?
Five minutes, okay. We'll come back at 7:46.
I need to take more than five minutes.
How long do you need?
At least eight.
She needs eight minutes, so.
Okay, eight minutes.
Eight minutes.
Recording in progress.
All right, we're going to bring the meeting back to order at 7:50. We're moving on to 9C abandonment case number WAB 23-0004, Maranatha abandonment. Mr. Lloyd, please introduce.
Will do. Yes, this item for hearing, discussion, and possible action to abandonment of Washoe County's interest in a portion of a turnaround at the northwest corner of a parcel at 47 Maranatha Road. And introducing our newest planner, this is Planner Tim Evans.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Good evening. Tim Evans, planner. As mentioned, the case before you today is abandonment case number WAB 23-004. So the project is located at 47 Maranatha Road, APN 04603158. As you can see on the screen, there is the vicinity map. The parcel is 3.69 acres. Its surrounding parcels, surrounding parcels are developed with single-family dwellings and accessory structures are vacant or are vacant. There's vacant parcels as well around that parcel. The property is within the South Valley's area and is zoned high-density rural. So the request is for an abandonment of a 2,769 square foot portion of a turnaround at the northwest corner of the parcel at 47 Maranatha Road. And as you can see on the screen, it shows the proportion, or the portion that is going to be abandoned, which is 2,760 or so square feet of that turnaround easement. And that site plan also shows the existing structures on the property, being a dwelling with an attached garage and a shed. So pursuant to Washoe County Code 110.406.05, when an access easement traverses a portion of a property and has a total width of more than 20 feet, the required yard setback is measured from the edge of the easement closest to the proposed structure. The existing dwelling fully encroaches into the 30-foot front setback required for the HDR regulatory zone. So the applicant is requesting the abandonment to bring the existing dwelling and any future additions, and any future additions into compliance with the front setback for the HDR regulatory zone. The existing shed that is on the property does encroach into that 30-foot front setback as it is located at the front of the parcel where the setback is not, is, the setback is not changing due to that portion of the easement not being abandoned. There is a condition of approval proposed to address that encroachment. Access for the property's utilizing Maranatha Road will not change as the result of the And the project was sent to various agencies, total of seven agencies reviewed. Three of those agencies provided conditions which are included in Exhibit A of the staff Public, proper public noticing was done. Eight parcels were noticed, and two phone calls were received as a result of the noticing after the preparation of the staff report, and it was just in relation to clarification. They wanted to know exactly what was going on with the abandonment, and the staff was able to answer all their questions. All right. So staff is able to make all three required findings as detailed on pages eight and nine in the staff report. And staff recommends approval with conditions and provides the following possible motion in the staff report as well as shown on the screen. And I'm here and available for any questions, as well as the applicant is present for any questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for him? No? Does the applicant have a presentation they'd like to present?
I, okay, I don't believe he has a presentation or anything like that, but I think he may have a comment.
Sir, you need to come up to the podium if you're going to speak, and please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Eric Lutz. I'm the owner at 47 Maranatha. I have no additional comments to add at this point.
All right, thank you. All right, let's open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I have no public comment in chambers. I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, last chance for public comment. All right, we're going to close that. We're going to bring it back to the board. Do we have any, anything we need to discuss, or any questions or anything on this? No? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Commissioner Lazarewski, I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved the abandonment case number WAB 23-0004 for Eric Lutz, with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all three findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code, Section 110.806.20.
Wonderful. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to nine D, Master Plan Amendment Case WMPA dash two-three-two-zero-zero-four, Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA two-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-five, Diablo Drive and Main Street. Mr. Lloyd, please announce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, for the record, I'm Trevor Lloyd with Washoe County Planning and Building, filling in for Julie, who is on vacation. And you all received a very thorough staff presentation last month, so I would just like to, if it's okay, just go briefly through the presentation, just to give you a refresher. And certainly I can, at that point afterwards, answer any questions that you may have.
I was going to ask that. If you could, please, just briefly go through what we've already gone through, yes.
Who's hiding? Thank you. All right. This is... This is Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA twenty-three-zero-zero-zero-four and Regulatory Zone Amendment WRZA twenty-three-zero-zero-zero-five. For hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an amendment to the High Desert Area Plan, a component of the Washoe County Master Plan, to change the Master Plan land use designation for a roughly eighteen-acre parcel from suburban residential to four acres of commercial, two acres of industrial, and twelve acres of suburban residential. And secondly, to subject to the final approval of the associated master plan amendment by the Board of County Commissioners, in a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities, recommend adoption of an amendment to the High Desert Regulatory Zone map to change the regulatory zone for an eighteen-acre parcel from MDS, medium-density suburban, to four acres of neighborhood commercial, two acres of industrial, and twelve acres of high-density suburban. And if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. And once again, this was continued from the August first Planning Commission meeting. Subject property is located in the High Desert Area Plan in the town of Gerlach. Again, it's a seventeen-acre property owned by the GID. There were numerous community meetings through the GID and a neighborhood meeting as well. The community voiced some concerns about the lack of housing and requiring more workforce housing. Also, there's a statement in the area plan needing opportunities for young people who would like to live and work in the Gerlach area after graduation of high school. And let me get to the map so that shows it more clearly. Again, the first map is the proposed master plan change from currently suburban residential to a mix of suburban residential, industrial, and commercial. And then the regulatory zone proposed change from all... Currently, the property is currently all zoned medium-density suburban. The proposed changes would change the property to a mix of high-density suburban, industrial, and neighborhood commercial. And this does a better job of showing the different proposed zoning designations. And there was some concern about the availability of facilities. Again, there are current infrastructure and services that along Diablo Drive, and it's anticipated that the current infrastructure can accommodate the proposed intensification. There was some concerns at the neighborhood meeting regarding the proposed industrial uses. There was some support for affordable housing and zoning flexibility. Again, concerns were raised about utilities as well. With that, staff is... Don't have it in the presentation, but offers the motion that's available within your staff report, and I can answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. Trevor, I have a question. Can you talk more about the commercial and industrial parts of this proposal?
Yes, I can. There is a desire on the part of the GID to offer not just additional housing, but opportunities for industrial and commercial options. There was some discussion previous to the application by staff with the applicants to consider general rural. And if I could go back to... I'm sorry, can I go back to that PowerPoint? Like to go to the map. We'll start with this one. You will notice that the surrounding properties to the west and to the north, and essentially, most of the zoning throughout the High Desert area has a designation of general rural. And what's unique about general rural in the High Desert is the allowance for almost unlimited types of uses, be they industrial or commercial. In fact, the highest intense industrial uses, heavy industrial, are all allowed or permitted in the GR zoning. So there's some concerns that have been voiced by community residents about the allowance of industrial and whether or not that's consistent and compatible with surrounding uses. Based on the allowance of all of the industrial and commercial use types within the GR zone in the High Desert, staff is able to determine that it is, in fact, compatible with those potential uses that are allowed in GR.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for him?
Trevor, I... Go ahead.
Go ahead. You were first.
Richard Doncic, quick question. It's come up a couple times. Just in legalities, where they're saying that the Gerlach GID may not be, how shall I say, have the authority to do this? There's some kind of legal concerns with the way they're... They were originally written up with the GID could and couldn't do, and now they're saying... Could you give me some clarification on that, please?
Really, that's not the purview of this body. It's not staff's purview either. We do not... Our determination of an appropriate zone change is not based on who owns the property. So ownership is really not a consideration for this body.
Thank you for that clarification.
Go ahead, Lena.
According to the master plan, utilities and water availability is one of the things we always look for. When I talked to the planner and I asked about more information about water availability for this project, she said it was irrelevant. Can you explain to me why it's not?
Again, I wasn't part of that conversation. I would not use the word irrelevant. Clearly, any development is going to require that the applicants can shore up and ensure that adequate facilities, services, and that includes water, are available at the time of development. I do believe in looking through the application and the reviewing agencies that were contacted, there were comments from both the water manager from Washoe County, as well as the State Division of Water Resources, and neither expressed concern over the availability of water, at least not in their comments that were provided.
Okay, what I didn't see was the State Division of Water. What I did see when I read it was just it just came from the GID. And the GID saying there's enough water is the fox guarding the hen house. So that's why I have concern about the information we've gotten in terms of water availability and other utility availabilities for this piece of property.
Well, again, they are still regulated through the state. They cannot violate state law and state requirements for adequate water rights for any future development that's proposed at this location.
Is he good? Do we have any more questions? Oh, go ahead. Speak into the microphone, please.
You're saying that it doesn't matter who owns the property. But to me, that's sort of relevant. I mean...
It may be. And in fact, there may be bylaws that I'm not aware of. But I'm saying that that is not one of the considerations that we consider. It's not one of the findings that need to be made in order for this body to approve or deny this request.
I get that. But I guess that means that, heck, if I wanted to, I could go out there and submit an application on, you know, some land in the middle of Reno, not Reno, but out in the county area, and you'd process it.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? No more questions? Okay, bring it back. No. All right, just the applicant will have a presentation. Do they want to present?
Eric Hasty, for the record. I represent the applicant, the General Improvement District. I think we went over pretty thoroughly last meeting of everything. I would just like to reiterate that this whole process was really driven by the GID and all the decisions making with putting on the types of zoning and everything we did. The purpose of that was really not to try to add more density, but to try to allow them to have more flexibility in providing more housing types, including multifamily, single-family attached, and single-family detached. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you guys may have. So, thank you.
Do we have any questions for him? No? Okay, we're going to open up public comment. Do we have any public comment?
In chambers, I have Roger Edwards, followed by Gary Schmidt.
Good evening again, Roger Edwards, for the record. Please enter my comments into the permanent record. Yeah, like I said, I was a general contractor for eighteen years. And if the owner doesn't make any difference, then why are we trying to change the density or change the maps or whatever? Let the owner decide that they want to do that as the owner of the property. But all that aside, I don't know if you folks have been up to Gerlach lately, but, you know, there's a half a town of industrial stuff that hasn't been used yet, and the GID wants to put in more. And I understand that they are hoping to change the use so we have more variety and all that, but that's just fine. But that's not the position the General Improvement District should be having. You know, like I said, as a general contractor, I buy a lot, and I want to build on it, and I have to go to the General Improvement District or the county or whoever to get the water and get the sewer and be sure the roads and sidewalks and stuff are done. I have to pay for that. What's going on here is the General Improvement District is acting as a general contractor. And that's, if it's not a law, then there should be, because that's a clear conflict of interest. I would like to develop properties and not have to worry about paying for sidewalks and roads and sewer and so forth. That'd be very handy for me. But the whole rationale of needing more of variety and so forth, when you've already had one master plan amendment added on this property, and now we want to change it, and it's just for the public good, so we have these other kinds of development available, but it sounds to me like all these things were available under like it was. There's too many things that are going on here that just don't smell right. These can't possibly be... The conflict of interest can't possibly be something that we don't think about. And, you know, as a two-decade general contractor, I'm really concerned about taking away this... The option of competition when developing property. But the other thing is, I don't know how many of you have been up to Gerlach lately, but, you know, Gerlach is not exactly a bedroom community of Sparks or Reno. It's two hours plus to get up there. It's not a booming area for development. People want to live up there to get away and to have their privacy and have their retirements and so forth. And this... You're adding like twice the amount of parcels in whole area.
Thank you, thank you.
That's not possible. No, there are only one way. Yeah, sorry. But you're up next.
Then we have to switch between Doc and...
Say again?
Because we're going to change our camera setting.
Next, I have Gary Schmidt.
Can you turn on his mic, please?
It should be on. For the record, Gary Schmidt, I'm going to submit some of my comments. Written comments are prepared and ad libbed here a little bit. You have the opportunity here tonight to, in the words of Nancy Reagan, just say no. The GID came before you seven years ago and asked this property to be changed from general rural to medium-density suburban. They went from one lot to fifty-seven lots, third-acre lots, fifty-seven lots, a third acre each, which is compatible, compatible with the area. And they sold three of them off, these three right here. And then this, it's fifty-four additional zoning for lots. They sat on it for six years. There's only about one-hundred-and-ten lots in Gerlach. If they developed this as currently zoned, it would be a fifty percent increase in the capacity of the town. There's about sixteen lots available in the town right now. They'd add fifty-four to that. Now, some of those lots, people have an extra yard, so they have two lots, et cetera. They're not all necessarily available for development. And I certainly support them putting those fifty-four lots on the market. But I don't support changing that fifty-four lots to one-hundred-and-sixty-two lots in a community that only has one-hundred-and-ten lots and just over a hundred people. Let me say, you've got a lot of materials from a lot of people. They didn't all make it into the record. Several people have been sending them directly. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review some of that. But the GID's charter does not allow them to go into the development business. If you review the minutes that have been sent to you, they say what they intend to do is subdivide this. They want, you know, dense zoning so they can pick and choose what they want to do later. They say on the record that they really only want forty lots. Well, why are they asking four-hundred-and-sixty-two? Because I would say they lack some direction and some competence, perhaps. They say on the record that they know nothing about development, therefore they've hired other people to do it. Well, if they know nothing about development, and their charter says they cannot develop property other than for sewers or water tanks or things that have to do with the utility district. So their charter doesn't allow them to do this. But the biggest point is, we don't need one-hundred-and-sixty-two lots, additional lots in Gerlach. Fifty-four is adequate. They should get that, those lots, on the market, and the lot shortage will disappear instantly. Probably take them at least five to ten years to sell those lots. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Gail Kralik, followed by John Kralik.
Excuse me. Thank you, Gail Kralik. I apologize. I did send to you earlier today, and I'm not sure if y'all had an opportunity to review, and I apologize for sending so late, but I did pull up the minutes of all of the GID of Gerlach, meeting minutes, starting from January twenty-fifth through the most current, which is dated June one. And what I want to point out, there was a comment made earlier that it doesn't matter who owns the property... who owns the property, it's not the purview of this board. Actually, I do think it's important for this board to understand who owns the property and what their charter states. If Mr. Schmidt has to perhaps use his legal right to make sure this doesn't go forward with the GGID, I would imagine he would. But after reviewing all the meeting minutes in length, I'd like to just point out a few items to you. Meeting minutes dated February 2, 2003 from the GGID. Public Works Supervisor Borelli commented, according to our discharge monitoring permit, our sewer ponds are at capacity and we are currently working on having this modified, but may have to look into a sewer expansion. That to me is concerning if this board decides to move forward. The next item I would like to point out is that Wood Rogers obviously was coming back in April to have another public meeting and a zone change and master plan amendment will be required. Hopefully they'll have a tentative map submitted to the county by the end of the fall. This is where we are today, I would imagine. Moving on then to the next meeting that I highlighted also was dated May 4, 2023. Chairman Conley commented that we would have to have the water and sewer capacity to do this project. If we don't know, if we don't have adequate water and sewer capacity, we can't do a development. This is a long process. We are hopeful that we will have this information about our capacity by the time this plan is ready. Vice Chairman states, we don't have the expertise to develop land, which is why we are utilizing Wood Rogers and County. Long story short, this has been discussed. It was rushed through. We had a motion to move forward with the project and it was not a unanimous vote. For a town as such a small as Gerlach without having a unanimous vote on what they want to do with their community shocks me. And last but not least, and I'm running out of time, there is not enough sewer capacity for this project. Please look at your meeting minutes dated June 1, 2023, and you'll see that statement from GGID.
I didn't touch it.
Lastly, John Kralik, please state your first and last name for the record.
How you doing? John Kralik, broker owner Alpine Realty International. Let's see, sat in Linda's seat for 10 years, Washoe County Board Equalization. Very familiar with property development, property valuation, et cetera. So I'm here to try to correct the wrong before it happens. The General Improvement District had these lots for seven years and did not, never took them to the marketplace as stated in their charter to bring them to auction. Now they're, without any sales data, trying to double the capacity of this portion of their community. And this is the edge of the community, far beyond that is the two large parcels, one of which Gary owns, one is the, the other 110 acre neighbor. You don't build a community by having a high density core and then having other zoning in place and then going back to a high density on your fringe. This drastically impacts the value of the properties surrounding the area. I submitted a written statement. You have a copy of that? I submitted the ordinances from their 1974 charter. In that submittal, it also goes into section K with, with their allowed to do, which seems to be not pertinent to this committee, but it should be taken into consideration before you create another Washoe County lawsuit for no reason. And I also submitted my background. I have, like I said, I've practiced real estate internationally. You could look at the Roman Empire, how they developed their cities. You could look at modern day Dubai and how they developed that. This kind of up and down zoning does not exist. So please take all this information into consideration before making your decision on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any further comment in chambers? I have no further comment in chambers. I do have several hands raised on Zoom. Derek Wilson, please unmute. Let's state your first and last name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. I'm Derek Wilson. I'm a consultant working on behalf of Burning Man. I, I think it's obvious from this hearing and from the hearing in August that there is some concern on the part of the public about the rezone. I'm not sure of Burning Man's letter on this issue. It was included in the staff report, but they, they sent some detailed comments, which I will briefly summarize here for the record. In general, Burning Man supports projects in Gerlach and, and they would certainly support a housing project. If somebody thinks they can make a run at some multifamily housing on this site, I think that would be good for Gerlach and would, and would support that. On the other hand, I think the industrial zoning is not compatible. I think if a private developer, a client of mine, wanted to pursue an industrial zone change adjacent to residential, we would be very cautious going forward with that. So I think there's some real compatibility problems with the industrial component. So I, I think that that requires some scrutiny. So again, Burning Man is not opposed to development in Gerlach and in fact would like to see things change there, like to see some upgrades there, some investment. But I would approach the industrial very cautiously and Burning Man is opposed to it. So those are my comments. Those have been submitted in writing. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
I have Gerlach, Gerlach GID. Please state your first and last name for the record. Go ahead and unmute.
Good evening. My name's Judy Conley and I'm GGID. I agree to this proposal concerning the rezoning here in Gerlach. I have lived in the Gerlach Empire area for 49 years, 30 of those years as a home property owner here in Gerlach. I worked for 30 years for the local schools. I raised my children at a time that we parents didn't have to worry about advertising for teachers, knowing that we had places for the teachers to live. The plant closed in 2011 and sat idle for several years. The housing in Empire has deteriorated and is, and repaired one house at a time for the mine's employees to live. It's not an option for Gerlach residents. Burning Man's properties are used for their employees. Local businesses' housing is used for their employees. Local ranchers use their bunk houses for their employees. That's understood. A longtime resident was our postmistress as the postmaster before her. When she retired, our new postmaster is living in an RV some distance from our town. All of the things that I've mentioned was brought out during the public discussions held in our community concerning this rezoning plan. Gerlach needs housing for all walks of life in order for Gerlach to thrive and survive. I'd like to clarify that we're not here, we're not talking about building anything. We are here to approve this plan. Thank you for your time. We have two more speakers here in Gerlach.
Just each person, please state your first and last name.
This is Russell Byerly for the record. I am the Gerlach GID Public Works Supervisor, and I would like to address some of the concerns about water and wastewater capacity for this plan amendment. First, I would like to emphasize that we are here to approve a plan amendment. We're not here to approve any specific developments and certainly not any construction at this time. Every journey begins with a single step and the very first step in making this development a reality is that we have to approve this master plan amendment and the zoning change. It is true that at this time, we do not have water and wastewater capacity to develop all of these potential lots simultaneously, because why would we? Why would we have double or triple the amount of water and wastewater capacity that we would need to account for development over the next 30 years, which is what we're trying to accomplish with this project? We are in the process. We have secured state revolving fund funding to increase our water capacity and we are currently preparing a grant proposal to increase our wastewater capacity, which we should be able to triple, we expect, within the next two to three years. We have only been at capacity one month in the history of Gerlach. Only one time did we get to the red line, and that was during the busy Burning Man event season, when we have roughly double the number of people in town that we have the rest of the time. If there are any other questions about our infrastructure and our ability to meet the demands of this project, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Kristi Evans. I am a full-time resident, unlike some of the speakers today. I am actually a full-time resident. I work here and live in Gerlach. And I am speaking to you today in support of approving this master plan amendment. So as noted in the staff report, Gerlach has a serious lack of available housing and commercial properties. This is not an abstract problem. People who want to live and work here at this time cannot find housing and businesses who want to support the community can't find property to do so. Our local school just hired a new teacher. That person cannot find a place to rent. One of our fire captains would like to move here with his family, but can't find a place to live. On our main street, there are currently nine commercial parcels owned by four entities, all of which sit vacant and unused, and some have been this way for many years. We have to look at new options and that's what this master plan amendment represents. The Gerlach GID has been discussing how to best utilize the land it owns for over a year now at their monthly public meetings, and I have attended all of them. I can tell you that the residents of Gerlach have weighed in at these meetings and the zoning represented here today that you're looking at is what we have asked for. The GID is responding to the needs of the community that they serve. It's unfortunate that some property owners who oppose this never attended those meetings, never expressed their views in the planning process, or offered alternate ideas to solve our housing problems. Some have suggested the GID should auction these parcels. Unfortunately, they did try that and now two of the auctioned off parcels are owned by people who don't live here and sit vacant. The benefit of the GID shepherding this parcel's development is pretty clear to me. They are a public body, they're accountable to the residents, and they have to take input from us throughout this process. And it's the only way we're going to end up with a development that considers what's in the best interests of those who actually live and work here. This master plan amendment represents a step forward in this process, a first step. It's not the final product. It doesn't set anything in stone. What it does is provide us with a framework to move forward with. I understand there's fear about this industrial piece. Again, that was a request at the, from the public saying we'd like the option to do some other things. They have addressed these concerns about junkyards and industrial and apartment blocks at their meetings, clarifying that there's still many opportunities for us to give feedback about uses and sizes and how we actually turn this into real property in the future. I want to be clear, I care about this town. I live here. We need a variety of housing types. We need a variety of types of zoning so that our community can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further public comment, either in chambers or on Zoom.
Okay, if there's no further public comment, then I'm going to close the comment section, public comment section, and bring it back to the board for discussion. Do we have anything? Any points of clarification or anything? I have a, I have a point of clarification for legal. Can you please talk to us about the owner designation that's been brought up several times? Just from the legal standpoint, people have said that they don't own or back and forth. Can we get some point of clarification on that?
Jen Gustafson for the record, I'm not entirely sure I understand the question. I know there was, obviously Trevor was asked about the ownership earlier and it's my understanding, of course, that the General Improvement District does own the parcel that's being brought to you for a zoning change and a master plan change. Whether there's any restrictions on what the GGID can do with its parcel or whether it can develop it or not is really outside the scope of this board's purview. And it would be, you know, just inappropriate for me to weigh in legally on what the GGID can do, because I don't represent the GGID. So is there a more specific question?
No, that was, that was the general concept of what I wanted to hear.
Okay.
Thank you, yes. I will note that Division of Water Resources did write that they have no comment on this, but they did reply to all of this. So as far as the board's concerned, what do you guys think? Do you guys want to make a motion? Do we have a motion? Is anybody ready to make a motion?
Commissioner Lazarewski, I'm prepared to make dual motions. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained as exhibit A to this staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in the master plan amendment case number WMPA 23-0004, having made at least three of the five findings, including in Washoe County Code Section 110.820.15D and the findings in Goal 21 of the High Desert Area Plan. I further move to certify the resolution and propose a master plan amendments in WMPA 23-0004 as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission. I would also move that after giving reasoned considerations, the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Planning Commission adopt the resolution included as exhibit B, recommending the adoption of regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 23-0005, having made all the findings including, included in the Washoe County Code Section 110.821.15D. I further move to certify the resolution and propose the regulatory zone amendment in WRZA 23-0005 as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Doncic, I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed?
Nay.
We have one nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to 9:00. Special use permit case number WSUP 23-0020 for PRSC transmission line. Mr. Lloyd, please announce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for possible action, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve a special use permit for a major public facility use type for an extension of a two mile long 69 kV kilovolt transmission line within existing utility easements from NV Energy's Fort Sage substation through Washoe County to the California State Line. The applicant is also requesting to waive all landscaping requirements and to vary the maximum height of 35 feet to allow for structures to be 65 feet in height. The project meets the standard for a project of regional significance because it entails construction of a transmission line that carries 60 kV or more. It require, it will require approval by the regional planning authorities before any approval at the county level would take effect. This project also requires amendments to the regional utility corridor map to identify the location of a new transmission line. The amendments must be sponsored by the Board of County Commissioners and approved by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Authorities. The project will need to comply with all federal and state approvals before any approval at the county level would take effect. Representing Washoe County in this matter and filling in for Kat Oakley is Planner Tim Evans.
Thank you. Tim Evans, planner. As stated, the special use permit case, or the case that is before you is special use permit case number WSUP 23-0020 for Plume Sierra Rural Electric Cooperative. So this is a request for a special use permit for a major public facility use type for an extension of a two mile long 60 kilovolt transmission line and to modify standards waiving all civic landscaping requirements and to vary the maximum height of 35 feet to allow for the proposed transmission line poles to be 65 feet in height. It also meets the standards for a project of regional significance because it entails construction of a transmission line that carries 60 kilovolts or more and requires amendments to the regional utility corridor map to identify the location of the. amendments to the regional utility corridor map to identify the location of the new transmission line. So as you can see on the screen, this is the location of that proposed transmission line. It traverses multiple parcels. So some background, the Plumessier Rural Electric Cooperative, PSREC, was founded in 1937 to bring power to Plumas, Lassen, and Sierra Counties. According to the applicant, it currently serves approximately 8,000 customers in eastern Sierra Nevada, including portions of Lassen, Plumas, Sierra, and Washoe Counties. PSREC also serves 450 households in the Red Rock community. The master plan designation for the parcels is rural, and the regulatory zone is general rural, as well as it is applied general rural zoning for the surrounding parcels as well. The land is undeveloped, with the state of California to the west, and Fish Springs Solar and NV Energy Fort Sage Substation located on the two parcels in the southern portion of the proposed development. To get the transmission line to California, it will be located within the existing utility easements along Rainbow Way, Hurlong Lane, and Indian Lane. As you can see on the screen, this is the site plan showing the area from Fort Sage Substation to the California State Line and the parcels that it traverses to get there. The extension is from Fort Sage Substation, as mentioned earlier, to the state of California, consisting of approximately 35 poles along the two-mile route. The 65-foot-high, two-foot-diameter poles will be approximately 300 feet apart and should have a minimal disturbance to the area. The existing utility easements vary in width from 50 feet wide north of Rainbow Way to 60 to 100 feet wide to the California State Line. There are currently no other utility uses in those easements. The extension, according to the applicant, will provide the following. One, increased reliability of service to the 450 homes in Red Rock. Two, increased reliability of service from wildfire issues. Three, assist the Sierra Army Depot to achieve compliance with the 2018 National Defense Authorization Act. And four, increased reliability of service to the Federal Correctional Institute and High Desert State Prison. The transmission line is unmanned, and any needed parking will primarily be from Fort Sage Substation, which already has parking available. The only grading on the site will be directly beneath the poles, and the applicant has indicated that the grading will not result in more than four acres of disturbed area, and no more than 5,000 cubic yards of cut or fill. No wildlife habitat areas were identified in the area by the master plan, and Endow provided comments and conditions that have been incorporated into the conditions of approval, which are attached to the staff report, to address their concerns. So the applicant is requesting to allow 65-foot-tall poles. Staff supports the waiver of 65 feet. 65 feet is the typical standard height for the type of proposed transmission pole. The applicant is also requesting to waive the landscaping coverage requirement of 20% and the required screening for civic use types adjacent to residential uses. Staff supports the waiver as the transmission line is located in a remote area with minimal low-lying vegetation and no available water for irrigation. A neighborhood meeting was held via Zoom on June 28, 2023, with two members of the public attending. The applicant presented a PowerPoint about the project, and there was one question concerning the need for water during construction. Forty-two parcels were noticed within 5,000 feet of the site, and no emails or phone calls were received because of the noticing. Various agencies reviewed the application, their comments are included in the staff report. Conditions from agencies are included in the conditions of approval attached to the staff report, and staff is able to make the required findings as shown in the staff report. So staff recommends approval with conditions and provides the following possible motion as seen on the screen and included in the staff report, and staff is available for any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for him?
Just maybe one. Excuse me, Commissioner Doncic, maybe just one question for clarification for the record. There was, in here, there was discussion of an archaeological site, and we always worry about archaeological sites, and then further on, it was mentioned that they consist of three prehistoric, so they're kind of in the, two are on the federal Sarah Depot, and one is on BLM land, so technically they're in the region, but there's no impact from this plan?
Yeah, yeah, based on what they're proposing, it doesn't impact.
Thank you, I just wanted clarification for on the record. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Anybody else? No? Does the applicant have a presentation they want to present?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Karen Downs. I'm with Manhard Consulting, and I'm here representing the applicant, Plumas Sierra Rural Electric Cooperative. I will go through my presentation briefly, because Tim covered a lot of it. First of all, I did want to introduce PSREC. They are a member-owned electric distribution utility, and they were founded in 1937, so they've been around a long time. They currently provide service through, in Washoe County, as well as Plumas, Lassen, and Sierra Counties. You saw these maps a little bit, but I did want to have this other slide that kind of shows where this proposed transmission line is and how it continues into California. So again, we'll start at the NV Energy Fort Sage Substation, head north on Rainbow Way, and then head west between Indian Lane and Hurlong Lane to the California State Line. This line shows how it will continue west into California, over to the Sierra Army Depot, the Hurlong Federal Correctional Institute, and the High Desert State Prison. It will end at the Patton Substation. We talked about that. Master plan rural designation, zoning is general rural, and in the general rural designation, this utility service use is allowed with a special use permit. So our project, again, it's about a two-mile extension of the 69-kV transmission line. There are existing easements in place. There's the existing right-of-way along Rainbow Way, and then there are easements, 60-foot to 100-foot easements, through the private property as shown on the red line. There are, proposed to be about 35 poles. They can span about 300 feet each, so that will go through that red line corridor. As Tim mentioned, we are requesting to vary the maximum height from 35 feet to 65 feet, and that will allow for the poles themselves. We're also asking to waive the formal landscaping requirement. One, as proposed, they would not shield or buffer the poles, and then it would also look out of place in this native vegetation. We will not trigger grading review, so there's no major grading permit needed. We're asking for no off-street parking. Since that won't be needed with the site, there's just maintenance of the line. And again, as Tim mentioned, it's a project of regional significance because it's greater than 60-kV transmission line. They have, the applicant has provided with the application of botany study, wildlife report, and cultural resources inventory. And there's no real pretty pictures with this project, but just transmission poles. And I, this exhibit on the left side of your screen, just to give an example of what a 69-kV transmission line would look like. So it's not one of the large towers that some people think of with transmission lines, it's that small pole-looking. Quickly, I just want to do, the reason why they're coming forward with this transmission line is primarily to increase reliability of service. So it will increase the reliability for the 450 homes of Red Rock in Washoe County. It will increase reliability of service from wildfire issues when there's public safety power shut-off requirements on the California side. It will assist Sierra Army Depot, Federal Correctional Institute in Hurlong, and the High Desert State Prison, all with this increased reliability of service. The Sierra Army Depot has provided a letter of support of the project, calling it a mission-critical transmission line for their use. The current unplanned no-notice power outages costs a lot of money on the, about $100,000 an hour. So when they do have a power outage, if it's more than a certain number of hours, they have to send everybody home, and costs a significant amount of money. So this will help them, again, they called it mission-critical transmission line, help them improve their readiness, modernization, minimize disruptions, and then meaningful cost benefits to them if they don't have to shut down the facility. As I mentioned, they did provide a letter of support for the project. I'm not sure if that made it into your packet or not. And then, as you saw through the California portion of the project, there are a variety of federal agencies they're working with as cooperating agencies, BLM, Department of Defense, and Department of Justice. I wanted to add on a little bit how we're here. Since it is a project of regional significance, we will go through, or have to provide an application to TMRPA for conformance review, and then also for an amendment to the TMRPA Regional Utility Corridor Map. You'll see that picture there, they show it as a straight line. That's the existing NV Energy corridor. We're proposing this alternate location, the green line on there. Because the existing corridor is an NV Energy easement, they're not able to locate within that. They would have to expand it anyway. The pole location through that existing corridor is an existing archaeological site and could be impacted as well. So with, as I mentioned, the distance of poles before 300 feet, with this smaller 69-kV transmission line, they would have to be closer together and would not be able to span the archaeological site that a larger transmission corridor would. So this proposed location makes it so it won't go through that archaeological site. TMRPA did have a chance to review our application package, and their initial review shows that there is no potential conformance issues. They also provided some Endow comments, or comments from Endow as well, for environmental review, and those are incorporated into the package. With that, of course, I'm available for any questions that you have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for her? No? Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I have no public comment in Chambers. I have no public comment on Zoom.
Okay, bring it back to the board for discussion. Do we have any discussion on it?
Commissioner Lazarewski, I just have a comment. I know that we've heard from the residents of this area that they're subject to a lot of burden due to the various transmission and energy developments there, and I'm very pleased to see an energy development that's increasing reliability for the residents themselves.
Definitely, me too. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Chair, if I could correct the record, and when I was introducing Tim Evans, I mentioned he was filling in. For Kat Oakley, he was actually filling in for Julie Olander, so let the minutes show the correction.
Okay. All right, so if there's no discussion, then I'll open it up for a motion. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Doncic, I make a motion. I move that after giving reason, consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved the condition, Special Use Permit Case Number WSUP 23-0020 for Plumessier Rural Electric Cooperative, PSREC, with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code 110.810.30. I further move to vary the Development Code standard, Table 110.406.05.1, to allow structures up to 65 feet in height and waive the landscaping standards of Article 412 of the Washoe County Development Code.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Nelson, a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to chair and commission items, future addenda items.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to remind the Planning Commission that there will be a joint Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Training on the 18th of this month, that's a Monday, at 10:00 a.m., and we'll be sending a reminder email.
And we will be getting lunch, right?
That will be up in, and there will be, and that will be up in the Mount Rose Conference Room in our offices. That's on the second floor down the hall, yes.
Thank you. Request for information from staff. Do we have any requests for information from your staff? No? All right. Director and legal counsel items, report from previous planning commission items.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. All right, legal, anything for legal?
Nothing for me today, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's open it up to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I have Gary Schmidt in Chambers. Gary, please state your first and last name. You have three minutes.
For the record, Gary Schmidt, I don't want to beat a dead horse, because it's not dead yet. This has to go before the Board of County Commissioners and Regional Planning. I want to read you the character statement from the, which is part of the regional plan, which says, "Future development in Gerlach should match existing high-density suburban land use," what they asked for, "in the already-developed center of town, and transition to medium-density suburban land," which is what they have now, "used along the periphery of town," which is where they are. So you voted for a violation of the master plan and the regional plan, and hopefully the regional plan people, if not the county commission, will take care of that. From the GID's charter, they have the right to sell or lease any land rights-of-way, easements, property, or material acquired by the district, which is what this was, is acquired by the district, given to them, in part by me, and to sell real property pursuant to this subsection to the highest bidder at a public auction after five days' notice given by publication, by its absence. They cannot develop this property. You've just invited major litigation. Let me continue to say that there are petitions before you and letters with signatures of approximately 35 of the 110 people that actually live in Gerlach, opposing this application as it's currently written, plus Burning Man opposed it as it's currently written. And if you review the minutes, you will find only one person in all those meetings spoke out in favor of this plan as it's written, that lives in Gerlach, and she spoke on Zoom tonight. There's no place in the minutes, and no place in any of those minutes of the meetings, that any other resident there spoke out specifically in favor of this plan. And as I said before, they have already, and in compliance with the master plan and the regional plan, the capacity to divide that 17 acres up into 54 1/3-acre lots. They've sat on their hands for over six years in regards to that. In addition, their zoning, a medium-density suburban, allows neighborhood commercial, which is what they asked for. But if you go for neighborhood commercial in their existing zoning, it then requires a special use permit, so the community can weigh in. But with what you've moved forward, and it's not a fine-done deal yet, because it's got a couple, it's got the planning, the Board of County Commissioners, and the Regional Planning District Court, you know, so they could develop that regional, that neighborhood commercial without any further review.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
No further.
No further public comment. Nothing on Zoom? Nothing in the chamber?
Nothing on Zoom. No further public comment. Chambers or on Zoom?
Okay. Next item is adjournment. Meeting is adjourned. Next item is adjourned.